Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of the Fargo School Board to order. Want to bring to everybody's attention, we have a time certain executive session that will occur right after the approval of the agenda. So Rebecca will be joining us via phone afterwards, and we have a couple that may need to depart prior to the meeting ending. So I would look for an approval of the agenda. Jim?
I moved adoption of the agenda with the addition of the HR agenda that was added at workstations to be added to item six of the Human Resource actions.
Okay. There's a second. Any discussion on the agenda? Jennifer?
Thank you. May I ask that items H and I be moved to business for discussion, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So would you like it under the business section, under, as in seven B?
Please.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion on the amended proposed agenda? Okay. All in favor of the amended agenda? Please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Okay, we will proceed. Item three is a possible executive session. Jim?
I'd like to move that we go into executive session as allowed under NRT, the Code of Sentry Code forty-four dash oh four dash nineteen dot one, section two and section five, for attorney consultation regarding pending civil litigation and to receive its attorney's advice and guidance on legal risks, strengths, and weaknesses of action which have held public would have adverse effects on the district.
Second? Anyone? Tracy, second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor of moving into executive session? Please vote by saying yes.
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 Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Okay, we will take a quick break and we will get all set up. Thank you.
We are back in session. We are back in session. Thank you for your patience, everyone. The next item on the agenda is recognition of the audience. It appears we have two people that have signed up to address us tonight. I will read a couple our statement here before they start. At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We ask that each speaker who has signed up to address the board state their name and address for the record. We would also ask that speakers refrain from using this forum to criticize or complain about a specific employee by name. The board is interested in your comments and will listen carefully, but is not obligated to respond or debate issues in this forum. Should you request, excuse me, request a written response to a specific question, you may request it. This evening, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of four minutes. And Anne Marie, are we using? Anne Marie has a buzzer, so she will let you know when you're getting close to your time. Is Rebecca Knutson joined us?
She has.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Rebecca. Our first speaker is Joe Kennedy. Joe, if you want to come to the podium, nice to see you, Mr. Kennedy.
President. I think it was on. My name is Joseph Kennedy. I live at 501 30th Avenue North in Fargo. I come today to request that the school board adopt a resolution opposing Senate Bill 2215, a bill to amend North Dakota's Century Code relating to deadlines for teacher negotiations between school districts and representative organizations. This bill would remove local control over a portion of the negotiation process from school districts and impose an arbitrary calendar date. This legislation is unnecessary. No one likes negotiations to drag on. That's a problem that can be solved without state laws being needed. School districts and organizations which represent teachers can implement a calendar of negotiation meetings with firm deadlines. And in Fargo, that has been the recommendation of multiple mediation teams. I am wondering if the school board member, the former school board member and the superintendent by testifying before the North Dakota Senate are saying that the FEA has refused to agree to a deadline set? Or has the board refused? Or has it simply been a recommendation from multiple mediation teams that just didn't seem important enough to bring up? Despite the ability of this school board to set local deadlines and despite specific recommendations to do so, three people speaking as members or former members of the district asked the state to pass a law taking away local control. They did so without apparent direction from the board. Nowhere in the agendas nor the minutes of the past three months did the board request such representation. And that diminishes trust. Trust is important. So many years ago, I can't even remember, when Jim Johnson stood up at my children's elementary school and explained what his criteria were for voting to close a school, his directness earned the respect and trust of the parents in that room. When then-President Robin Nelson worked to find common ground and put aside ego to work together with teachers during difficult negotiations, sharing the trust of teachers. When board members and employees of the district testify in Bismarck in support of a bill that further restricts teacher voices, trust is similarly diminished. If you adopt a resolution as a full board opposing Senate Bill 2215, you will build trust. Opposing this legislation says to the parents in the district, the citizens of Fargo, and the educators, we believe we can work together to set a meeting schedule, to set deadlines, and negotiate in good faith. Opposing 2215 puts this board on record. We take our responsibility and power seriously, and we wish to work with our local educators instead of requesting laws passed by the state that will further restrict our ability to do our job. Like the teachers and paraprofessionals in our schools, you want what is best for Fargo's children. You also have to balance that with being responsible stewards of Fargo's tax dollars. Seeding more control to the state government makes it harder for you to fulfill either of your missions. Please publicly oppose Senate Bill 2215. Help build trust in this district.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. The next speaker that has signed up to address the board is Lori Klow. Welcome, Lori.
Thank you. My name is Lori Klein. I live on 15th Avenue South in Fargo. I think that silence on committees and boards is one of the main reasons that the public distrusts them, especially when there's silence when there ought to be discussion. When teachers and parents ask you important questions by email and receive no acknowledgement that they have sent an email, your answer is very clear. I think that all of you should consider stops, to stop saying that teachers are scared, teachers are anxious, or scares, teachers are nervous to be in full classrooms during our pandemic. Educators face classrooms full of kids from kinders to middle school to full-grown teens all day long, every day of the year, all of their careers. They train for active shooter events, hazardous chemicals, fires, and tornadoes. They answer and make parent phone calls, emails, and tonight's conferences. Parents who have been afraid for and of their children ever since they were born, that's who teachers talk to and help along the way. Some of your teachers are parents, and that makes them the bravest people in the world. Educators are not afraid to teach in person in classrooms during a pandemic. They are afraid of the silence from this board and the committee when it is time to discuss what is next, while there is still time and our numbers and our metrics are low for you to discuss what you will do next. You say that schools should be the first to open and the last to close, and we absolutely agree with you, but we live in Fargo, we live in North Dakota. Our state, our county, and our city leaders did not take action early to slow the spread last fall. Only when our hospital capacity was threatened and too many people were sick and dying did our community leaders react at all, and it was too late to prevent over 1,400 deaths in our state. With businesses open, sporting events continuing apace, bars and operate, bars and restaurants operating for indoor dining, social gatherings and events proceeding without delay, teachers, parent educators, and school staff began to get sick in numbers high enough or quarantined in high enough numbers to impact school operations and effective education, but your committee voted to return more students to the classroom. We want to say thank you to the middle school teacher Kathy Schott, a member of the COVID-19 Committee, for speaking into the silence and asking the only thing that we want to know right now. What is next? What will you do when cases rise here again and when the variant comes to North Dakota? The answer seems to be, at least from what we heard yesterday, that you will deal with student outbreaks very narrowly defined as transmission that only happens in school, and that you will wait until so many staff and educators are sick or quarantined that a building literally cannot stay open. What does that even look like? How many teachers, educators, school staff will be hospitalized? Are we going to wait until someone dies? Masks and social distancing were good enough for the NFL, and they found out that transmission is happening from distances further than six feet and in less than 15 minutes. Yesterday, the question came up, will you follow new CDC guidance? You haven't followed the old CDC guidance, so we don't have a lot of faith that you're going to follow something else that comes out. Fargo Public Schools reported 238 students last week who met the CDC definition for close contact. The CDC recommended that those students be quarantined, but Fargo Public Schools required 62 of them to be separated. It's no wonder we have outbreaks on our hockey team. Let me tell how much station I listen to. The CDC says that schools must be open for in-person learning, and we agree with mitigation strategies in place. Our society relies on schools to build really great citizens, and we would like you to help them, help them become citizens who don't wait to be the last people to act in an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Next item on the agenda is reports, item 5A, steam monitoring. Who would like to make introductions? Go ahead.
I'm not sure if all the board members are aware, but February is National Career and Technical Education Month, and as part of our annual reporting to the board for our results steam monitoring report, we today have Dr. Jonas and Mr. Ryan Pierce are going to celebrate our career in technical education program. And every year, they highlight and have a little nice presentation for us, so excited to see what's happening today.
Thank you, Dr. Gandhi, President Nelson, and members of the board. You cannot tell, but I'm really smiling big underneath this mask, so please keep that in mind as we present today because we are honored to be here tonight to talk about career and technical education. And I think, you know, I've been here several times, but there are new board members, so some things might be familiar to some of you. Well, for the rest of you, it's new information, so we'll try to be efficient with our time. As you know, it's February CTE month, so I always am looking forward to jumping in and having time to tell a story. On your table, Anne replaced a sign that says, "I love CTE." And that sign, here's a few fun pictures that we've taken this week with our teaching and learning team and Iдет, who is the backbone of our department, and then a group of teachers. And we were just encouraged to take a picture and post it if you, if you love CTE. So you have a sign, and you can join in. I know, that's quite, that's quite the photo right there. But they were having fun with it, and that's what we like to do. It's all about the students. And what we love about career and technical education is it's engaging, it's project-based, it creates authentic opportunities, it creates choice. Students are active learners and thinkers with career and technical education, so we're really proud of that. It's about the students, and it's about finding passions, and it's finding out about what you love and maybe what you hate, but ultimately, it helps you become knowledgeable about yourself. We really value the idea that the right student and the right path for the right reasons, and not just because, and really valuing whatever path a student chooses to take beyond high school. That might be a 16 credit certificate, it might be a pre-apprenticeship program, it might be a two-year, four-year, it might be military. I think, always thinking about the language that we value, any choice that you make to better yourself. Sometimes there's been a little bit of a competition of, is it a four-year? Is it a two-year? The idea is to know that students, we are lifelong learners, and regardless of where you start, starting in a, in a good place matters. So valuing those choices is big when we think about our career pathways. And I provided a copy of our career pathways document that we can use as a resource that talks about the CTE scholarship, choice-ready, the courses that we offer in Fargo Public Schools, and this is also available on the website. And we're making some updates with photos, and then we'll have a new version out for people to look at. But I think the most important thing is when we think about our pathways, is that we really want that to be an all-encompassing, integrated thought, is that we have our core academics that incorporate 21st century skills, and then we find that career passion, passion and pathway, and then if we get a little work experience in there, our students can walk away with a feeling of choice-ready experiences. And so that's what we think about in career and technical education as we work through our curriculums. We want high-quality CTE. And sometimes we wonder, what does that really look like and what does it mean? And I believe that you have a handout of the 12 standards for high-quality CTE that was just recently developed by the national organization. I'm not going to go through all of those, but I want you to know that's one of our target documents that we will be using to determine what is good and what is great and what needs improvement. So that's one of our frameworks. And then, of course, the strategic plan for Fargo Public Schools, how do we work in How do we work in conversation and collaboration to align that work? And then another document that you have a copy of is the Six Essential Strategies for Creating Effective State Pathways. Again, this was created by business and industry partners and, and some wonderful models across the nation. And so what we've been looking at is, how do we prioritize our career development, our pathways, and incorporate these big ideas to create some experiences? Again, it's about the students, and how can we keep those smiles and that learning going? Beyond the programs that Fargo Public Schools have, how do we also think about opportunities that might be in our community? We partner again with Cass County CTE Center. So aviation and diesel and welding, those are programs that might not be in Fargo Public Schools, but we partner with schools to create that opportunity for our students. So we keep thinking about these pathways. And what our goal is, as we continue to move forward, is just thinking about, here's an example. What does it really look like at high school? And then back to middle school and back to elementary? So that we can think about how, what does career exploration look like to have our students think about information technologies or manufacturing? So that's in our thinking, and we work with our career counselors to start having those conversations. Moving forward, there's been a lot of discussion in the community about the Career Workforce Academy. This is a rendering of one side of the building. And thinking about, then again, that advancement on the other side is beyond your junior year. And some of the continuum that Ryan will visit about is this whole pathway conversation. Even though a lot of our coursework is at the high school level, we're also thinking about always alignment to post-secondary. What does that look like for industry certification? And we're thinking about how do we set students up for that next step to success? And that's in that career academy model, and also just in our current model with some of our programs. So today, I am honored to introduce my coworker. I sometimes refer to her as my co, my work husband because we spend so much time talking. I hired Ryan seven years ago, and we have just been working together. And he's just, is passionate about curriculum and talented. And the teachers that he works with, they are amazing, and they contribute to the quality of education. But our pathways and our, everything starts with the curriculum. And what we want our students to know and be able to do and how we will know that they're learning. And so Ryan is going to take time to share his story and the amazing work he's done to help Fargo Public Schools have high-quality CTE curriculums. So I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for the wonderful introduction, Dr. Jonas. I think it brings me back to a meeting earlier today. We were talking a little bit about when you come to education, you have to bring the sizzle and the steak. And I think she brought the sizzle. So I'm going to bore you guys with steak right now a little bit. No, this is a very passionate area for me. I started in 2001 in Fargo Public Schools as a construction and automotive teacher. And of course, my path has led me to where I am today, working with an amazing group of people. I'm trying to stand away from the mic. I have a big voice. So, you know, really going back to what Dr. Jonas was saying, you know, we look at those 12 indicators from ACTE as to, you know, what are the quality of our programs? So you can see on this slide that standards-aligned and integrated curriculum, sequencing articulation, student assessment, and engaging instruction are really my focus areas of the 12, would be those four indicators. Of course, I will push wrong buttons, and we'll make it interesting, right? So, you know, we talk a lot about curriculum is really our driver. As Dr. Jonas talked about, our partnerships, our alignment with post-secondary, with credentials, dual credits. That's really driven by the curriculum conversation. So this is a little map I always like to throw up when I start talking about this. The items that are in the block are kind of those base items that we are constantly working on with instructors to tweak and tune. And when we look at our philosophy of teaching and learning and our assessment and evaluation, those are kind of moving targets for us sometimes, depending on where we are administratively, where our research lies in education, best practices. All of those things, sorry, impact what we are doing. And they are a moving target, but we still have to have that piece in the center that is adjustable to that moving target. So that really gets into what our guaranteed and viable curriculum is. What can we ensure all learners are going to learn coming out of any of our given programs? That guaranteed and viable curriculum is driven by our state and national standards as per our different curriculums, different content areas. We also work to align with our district goals, which, as we know, Marzano is a big piece of that evaluation tool that we use. We also build around best practices. We focus on dynamic curriculum. Within industry, I think we're all aware that that is a moving target. It is moving a lot more rapidly than I think we feel like we can change sometimes. So we really try to look at how we form that curriculum to be flexible, to be able to adjust to what's happening within our industries, as well as our post-secondary alignment. And of course, I should just click the mouse. I should know that after that one. So one of the big guides for this is our district scorecard. This is developed by our teaching and learning team. It really breaks down based on the Marzano model into three sections that we focus on. Our standards and frameworks, kind of that roadmap of what we're doing, our assessment practices, and then implementation and practice. And so as CTE, we've really kind of tried to section that out and focus on the different elements one at a time. It's hard to look at assessment if you don't have frameworks and standards developed correctly. So within CTE, we're very solid in our standards and frameworks, and we're really working on assessment practices right now. And of course, that ties back to things that are happening with our grading practices, learning management systems, all the different things that are happening within our district. So that is our current focus. And really, our goal gets to be building that capacity within the teachers as well, who are the drivers of this. They are the ones that really do this work. But building that consistent capacity so they're able to repeat this, make these changes, and be flexible as things change within industry. So a little bit of what that looks like. This is a project that we worked on. This is all of the curriculum for career and technical education. So through our teachers access it through the employee portal, we can choose any of our departments, and we can see all of the different courses that they teach. So Family Consumer Sciences has 19 different courses. And those numbers are kind of one of the interesting things about career and tech ed. We have approximately 75 courses, 60 instructors, seven to 10 different department areas, depending on how you look at it and categorize them. Logistically, it's been kind of an interesting conversation to do this work because we have people who are singletons working, low numbers of people to work on classes. Some people teach six, seven different classes within the scope of a couple of years. So it's been kind of an interesting process working through and developing a consistent systematic, well, system that we're able to continue building on this work and building towards assessment practices and our scorecard goals. So Bill said I could just click on this, and it would come back. So I'm going to believe him. So through this, you know, I can't iterate enough that our teachers are the core of this. As we've worked through these models with Jodel, with our teaching and learning department, the feedback from our teachers has been extremely important in this entire process. So we're working with a course captain model where we have, I believe it's about 22 different course captains currently within career and tech ed because of all the different content that we have. And so we work directly with those individuals to set the pace for what's going to happen through our PD, our PLCs, all the different pieces of education. So using that model has been really, really valuable for us. It's building that capacity. It's really letting people own what they are doing and developing and having an outlet for feedback. And so kind of mentioned some of these things in here. We all, what affects the curriculum? What does curriculum affect? Goes back to some of the things Dr. Jonas said. This drives our professional development, our PLCs, our focus on career-ready practice or 21st century skills. What do we use for resources? What type of technology do we use? All of these things are impacting, and we are impacting with curriculum. It's also been with our goals, really focusing on student choice, flexible learning models, personalized learning, engagement, assessments, reflective practice, and reporting. So those have been our real focuses as we've been working through this process. So a little bit, Dr. Jonas said I had to add this one in here because I don't like to talk about myself, which I don't think anybody will believe because I can talk. But besides, behind-the-scenes work, we spend a lot of time evaluating our programs, looking at how are we utilizing the different indicators and markers like essential learning outcomes? That's one of these buried back in here. We can align our learning outcomes with career-ready practices. So are we covering these things in depth like we should be within a program area? How are we aligning with our colleges? You know, how do we budget all of this out? So all of those fun things are some of the stuff on the backside that I get to work with, with our teachers to develop a guaranteed and viable curriculum. So with that, I will give it back to Dr. Jonas for the last slide. Thank you, guys, very much.
Good stuff. Thank you. Great explanation in a short timeframe. This is why we invest in CTE and the curriculum work that we're doing. What we do know, one of the things that I struggle with is data and results. That was one of my goals this year, so working with Fargo Public in our technology department to determine how we can collect data better. And at the state of North Dakota, what happens with those students once they take classes and go on to college? We're working on those pieces. What we do have, one data point from this year that our concentrators that graduated from CTE in Fargo Public Schools graduated at a 98% rate. Now, what I struggle with is how many students are in that data point? And that's where the state, you know, we go back and forth. It's what's your data and what does it mean? So it's a good data point, but, you know, what does it really mean? So those are the things we're working on. But what we do know is it is helping students graduate, and that's a plus, and so we appreciate that. And we value that, and we're going to continue to focus on becoming a high-quality CTE program for Fargo Public Schools. And a big shout-out to the teachers that aren't here today. If you're on TV, thanks for watching or watch the video. And thanks to you as a board. You have a little treat on your table, and it's a thanks-a-bunt. I know this year's been challenging. So thank you for making, it's a lemon cake. Thank you for making lemons, taking, making lemons, you know, out of a, maybe, what I wanted to say is, thank you for making lemonade out of a year of lemons. I'll get it right here because I'm thinking about lemon cake now. I got all messed up. So Jackie, you have a special treat for, yeah, in case we have budget, you know, discussions you need. So that special cake is for you. So thanks to Bill Westrick for that pitch. He helped me out. You know where to find us. Please reach out if you have questions or if you have any comments or suggestions. And we thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Do we have any questions for our wonderful presenters tonight? Jennifer? Sure.
Thank you both. I always enjoy hearing your presentations, Denise. How many programs, if any, have changed over the last year or two? I mean, maybe since COVID, not many. But have there been any additions or enhancements? I'm just curious, and then I have a part two.
Okay. Well, we, one area that we're piloting now is in the area of marketing. So we are doing, adding hospitality and tourism and a social media marketing at Salt High School. This year, we added robotics as an introductory. Well, I would have to say robotics is a nine-to-12. And so that is being implemented at Davies and North, which has been very well received by the students up there. We are also transitioning for next year. Because of our IT challenges, we are adding programming with Python. We have intro to coding and gaming. And then we kind of had a gap before they jumped into Java. And Python is one of the newer languages that is very popular. So we're adding that in as a semester course. As an opportunity, we'll see if students sign up. That's always the registration process. We, we did drop a course. We have Cisco Networking, which we know there are a ton of jobs in the area of networking and systems management and cybersecurity. But again, finding that balance with engaging students without overwhelming them. So we had the Cisco pathway, but our enrollments were declining. What we've done this year is decided to introduce a class for, I'm going to call it Intro to Networking and Cybersecurity, that's more based on the home network and Wi-Fi. Xbox, how do you set up your own Xbox? How do you set up your own Wi-Fi? How do you set up a security camera system in your house? And so that would be more of a personal use type of scenario for your house or maybe a small business. And then we'll go into the Cisco Networking, which introduces a student to more of that advanced level. So those are examples. And then we just had an amazing conversation today on the Career Workforce Academy is how do we take our engineering program conversation and go beyond our intro to engineering, principles of engineering, and turn it into that capstone experience? And that might be our, that might be the location of the Career Workforce Academy that we would combine manufacturing, principles of engineering, a capstone project, and robotics in a space. So I think those are the things and ideas that we're working on. Intro to Education Pathway, I forgot about that one. We have a new course that was approved last year, Educating the Exceptional Student. And then working with Dr. Gandhi and Dr. Usleman on, and Dr. Gross is kind of a collective effort of how do we turn this into maybe a robust pathway for paraeducators and then students to start exploring? So that's another pathway we're working on.
Sounds like lots of exciting opportunities. Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that. My, my second question is actually, when you talk about alignment to post-secondary and how important clearly that is, and then also the grading practices that are changing, how has that impacted or how will it align since post-secondary hasn't changed, but seems we are?
Well, they're open to the discussion. So that's what I have to say. Maybe they, maybe not everyone is there yet because everyone's still trying to figure it out, even ourselves. As Ryan is working with sixth grade this year, what does it look like at sixth grade? And then we move into seventh and eighth. And then we're having the discussions at the high school. But we have informed, I know Dr. Gandhi and I were on a advisory committee meeting with M State. And we posed the conversation that, you know, as our grading practices change and what it looks like, what does a successful learner look like leaving a K-12 school setting? Colleges will need to be ready for that because how do they look at stackable credentials? How do we look at badges? How do we look at a student coming in with articulated credit and learning so that they have dual credit or articulated agreements? So there is a lot of conversation, and post-secondary is open to it because, you know, COVID disrupted all of us in many ways, and learning looks different now. And that, is that different at the high school, elementary, or the college? And so we all need to be thinking about what that looks like. So I, I'm excited about the future, as you can tell. My smile is under here still. So thanks for the questions, but that's what we're working on.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Well, I can sense your excitement. And Dr. Gandhi?
Sure. And not a question, but I just also wanted to mention one more thing that Dr. Jonas is recently working on because it was just brought to her plate, but that we're excited about. And that is a partnership opportunity that we have with M State and maybe other, a lot of other organizations in town as well. And that is trying to capitalize on the fact that we're going to have 7,000 jobs available because of the diversion project. So Dr. Jonas and her team are going to work with, partnering with M State and other institutions in our area to see how can we prepare both our high school students that'll be graduating and working with Jennifer Free and our adult ed program for those students to make sure that we are able to, to the best of our ability, make sure that we have a local mobilized workforce for a lot of the diversion jobs, the 7,000-plus jobs that'll be coming to our community here in the next couple of years.
We're also bringing on a short-term experience here with the Gears Dollars We're also bringing on a short-term experience here with the Gears Dollars, and it's a partnership between Fargo Public and West Fargo, to hire a work-based, work-based experience liaison. We want to do work experiences, but it's challenging for our teachers and counselors to get up, get out and secure those sites. So this position would help work with our community to recognize all the businesses in our pathways that would be available to hosting or job shadows or guest speakers, and then connect with our schools, whether that's a teacher or counselor. So that's something we're working on as well. So we'll see where that goes, but I'll keep you posted. That'll probably be my next report, so.
Thank you so much. I, I need to thank our colleague Seth Holden for serving on the Cass County Career and Technical Education Board. I know that that's very important to him. And I have one correction that I, I think you should clarify in your report. You are not becoming a strong program. You are a strong program that continues to try to be relevant and timely and always improving. So your energy never wanes, and I, I really appreciate all you're doing for, for your, for our districts.
Well, thank you. It's a pleasure.
Okay.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. COVID, item 5B, COVID-19 Instructional Plan Update, Dr. Gandhi and Dr. Newman.
Sure, thank you. Okay, I'll try to be brief. We met yesterday morning, and we are just regrouping to see how things are going since our district returned to full in-person instruction five days a week on January the 19th. We started with our Cass County data, and it was pretty much all good news, as I'm sure you guys have seen. Our positivity rate, our hospitalization rate, and our mortality rate are all trending down, significantly so. Our new positives per day rolling average is improved to 19.93 per day, and our 14-day positivity rate is the lowest it's been since September at 2.27%. Our COVID-19 hospitalizations are down. We were currently sitting at 39 hospitalizations statewide, and I believe we're at eight here in Fargo, so quite low. And the majority of those remain to be people with underlying conditions or from long-term care. As I said, the deaths from COVID are down. That's both in Cass County and across the state. Our January numbers were much lower than previous months that we had seen. We did not see the Thanksgiving or Christmas spike, which many states did experience, so we are grateful for that. And our highest active cases in our state continue to be in that 20- to 29-year-old age range. But interestingly, the lowest active cases are now the 80-plus range, which is good news. And the next three lowest groups are all children, 0- to 5, 6- to 11, and 12- to 14. There was a reminder that Binax Now testing is still readily available for Fargo Public School staff. They reported that overall testing has decreased, and they see less symptomatic people coming to get tested, which is positive. And then there was discussion about the vaccine rollout. It's estimated currently that 11% of Cass County residents have received at least one dose or the first dose of the vaccine, and we are currently working our way through Priority Group 1B. I'll talk a little bit more, but educators are at the end of that group, and they're kind of at the early stages of that group. I'm probably not going to go through all this. I tried to do it in chart form for you guys, so you could just visually see it. But then Doug presented the FPS staff data, and this was as of Sunday morning. We had one staff member test positive the previous week and three staff out due to positive tests. You can see the breakdown there, but the numbers are very, very low, zero for most, most areas. And then staff quarantine numbers also quite low. They're listed there. I thought I'd touch on our substitute fill rates. That was also good news. I brought, we tried to bring it down by elementary, middle, and high school. Thank you, Doug, for all this information. But the total teachers, you can see percent unfilled for 2021, we're sitting at 9.34%. And the next column over is percent unfilled to 2020, which is 13.9%. And then the paraeducator data is there. That is probably the area we are still struggling to fill the most, but it doesn't seem to be drastically different from previous years and non-COVID times. And then we had our Fargo Public Schools student data presented. This was as of Sunday evening. Thirteen students are in isolation due to a positive test. Current active cases are very low, two cases in elementary, six cases in middle school, five cases in high school. And then student close contacts, there was a total of 262. It's important to remember that these can be close contacts in the home, community-related or school contacts. We don't know the delineation of that. And then student close contacts that were in quarantine due to that, due to not wearing a mask, were 77 out of that number. And then we discussed the vaccine rollout and what that's going to look like. As I said, we're currently in the early stages of Group 1B. Educators will be at the final stage of 1B, and it sounds like they will work their way through a randomized order between the three groups I previously talked about, having to do with your amount of contact with students, et cetera. And then we asked for, Dr. Gandhi asked for input from the teachers on the committee and just how are things going now that we're back in, in five days a week? And surprisingly, all the, the reports were, were positive and good. It was stated that overall, things are going really well. There was a lot of Thanksgiving to parents and custodial staff for all the extra help. Students mostly are doing what we ask of them. There were some reminders needed to wear masks properly, mostly at the high school level, a lot of below-the-nose situations. And then the staff is still just feeling anxious about when the vaccine is coming. And then students were glad to be back, it seemed, at all levels. So our plan is to continue in the modified Level 4, which we're in now, and slowly think about working toward the new normal or Level 5 instruction. At this point, it's just sort of seeing what works and what doesn't work. The feelings will continue to be conservative and continue with things like virtual teacher conferences, limiting large group gatherings, no field trips, et cetera. And we'll continue to monitor our mitigation strategies and just modify as we're able. There were no votes at the meeting, and we decided to meet again in a month on March 8th, right before spring break. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that thorough report. Any questions for Dr. Newman? Okay. You covered it all. We have no questions. Okay, next item is 5C, the Legislative Update, Dr. Gandhi and myself. How would you like to start, sir?
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. As you know, it's been a busy, busy session right now. Everything's kind of working through committee, and now things are going to hit the floor very rapidly. So if you think things were moving fast before, they are going to, it's going to get crazy. I figured I would give you an update on a couple of the bills that we have been watching that have had recent actions and some of my observations as well. So three of the bills I will highlight tonight. House Bill 1182, that related to permitting any party designations for candidates for county and local elections, which includes school boards, of course, was, died on the floor, so that one is behind us. Lots of interesting testimony to watch there. House Bill 1369 was relating to the establishment of an education empowerment program. That came out of committee, it was amended, but it came out of committee, do not pass by 11 to 3, so now it will hit the, the floor. And the third one is House Bill 1318. This just happened today, and it was the, the adoption of a restraint and seclusion policy. After several amendments, it came out of committee, do not pass. So that was kind of a surprise. So those are my highlights on the, the recent actions that happened, oh, since last week. Some of the observations that I've had is watching testimony, because that's what I do all weekend. Our North Dakota School Boards Association does watch closely and tries to correct any misstatements that are made by testifiers. And one that really stood out for me, a lot of legislators are saying that they, the state is now picking up 70% of public education in the state. That is how it is worded in the formula, but in reality, the calculations from DPI come down to 61.88 of average covering costs for public education in our state. I think that's important to share, because I always hung my hat on the 70%, and that was kind of my benchmark. That has been corrected. In fact, it was questioned by legal counsel, and it was verified through DPI. I think that's important to remember as far as, since we're on Legislative Update, our next meeting, trying to, trying to figure out when to report on my committees versus governmental affairs, but our next meeting is February 19th, and we'll work on finalizing the crossover meeting details. And then please save the date of 7:30 a.m. on February 23rd for our virtual Legislative Update prior to crossover. Dr. Gandhi, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think you've covered it all. Main thing is that I think whenever GAC makes, we'll have to figure out and where our focus is going to be for the crossover breakfast, but we'll see what bills are still standing at that point.
Yes, that's, that's kind of a trick. Jim?
I don't know which bill, and I don't know which side, Senator House, but at the negotiations seminar, the gentleman that was presenting the state budget forecast indicated there's, somebody's putting forward a 2% increase in PERS and TFFR. And I think we better get our hands around where that is, because if that passes, obviously it'll impact what funds we're going to have available going forward.
I, I agree. I, I did not hear TFFR, I only heard PERS, but I'll look into that. Did you? Okay, well, well, absolutely. Lots of, lots of committees to chase, that's for sure.
Robin, this is Rebecca.
Yes, ma'am.
Say, I'd just like to thank you and administration for the diligent work that is going on. I've been taking some time to watch some of the testimony that has been taking place. And thanks to those of us, so board members, we've had some members of our community in terms of, and also administration, that are taking their time to either go to Bismarck or, or phone in or participate through video, and I appreciate that. I have seen very well-organized work, and, and that's important. And it's important for us to all remember the positions that we have, that we are taking, and that the diligent work that's being done, not only within our Fargo School District, but also with West Fargo, to unify our positions based on our legislative priorities. And so keeping in mind that the stances that we are taking on these bills has to do with where we are grounded in our legislative priorities, and I ask that we continue to support your work as a board, and if we have questions, of course, that we, you know, we discuss those either at GAC or that board members send you questions if they have questions in regard to stances on bills. But everyone should understand that, you know, we're speaking as one voice in terms of our positions, and if anyone also has questions, feel free to contact me. Thank you again for your help, and I will mute again.
Thank you, President Knutson. Dr. Gandhi, did you have something to add?
No, prior to that, I was just going to send a, let board members know as a reminder, Jolynn has set up our weekly tracking list. That is available for board members through the Legislative Bill Tracking website. So if you want to take a look at all of the education-related bills that Fargo Public Schools is involved with, we can send you again the instructions on how to set up that tracking list.
Thank you. And thank you, Jim, for bringing up that bill. I will hunt it down and send it out to, to everybody tonight. Jennifer, go ahead.
Thank you. So I actually have a few comments, and then specifically, let me start with, a couple of people that addressed the board tonight actually pointed out that there were bills being, where we were taking positions on these bills without discuss, discussing at the full board. And I actually share that concern, that that happens. And in addition to that, the second speaker commented around committee, non-committee members not being allowed to participate, which is indeed happening. And so even at the committee level, there isn't discussion happening on these bills. So we really are relying on just a few people's voices, and so I find it problematic when we say we're speaking with one voice, but really we're not, because we're not all able to give our opinion and, and in an open meeting. And so I really do think that we should discuss that process and how we could do better. And, and I also think that we really, I think it's important to say that just because we disagree doesn't mean it's unhealthy. I actually think the opposite is true. And, and I, I think that we need to take the time to have that kind of discussion. And this specific bill that I would like to bring up is 1369, one of them that you talked about. And as you know, I, I supported that bill individually, and the reason being is because it isn't a voucher program or as it's being sold. It's really, you know, it's an appropriation for qualified providers. And I don't know about you all, but I've heard from a lot of parents who, who have services that they have to go outside of the district for, in terms of, one example would be dyslexia. So what if they could have a tutor? Or what if they could have, you know, these funds being allocated for that service of, for their child? And I, I, I just feel like we work with a lot of organizations, and we partner in other ways, and we have collaborative agreements for athletics and, and maybe even share some sort of, I don't know, title funds in that area. But why can't we do it in this as well? And, and so I think that it's at least worthy of a discussion versus just a, a strong opposition. I mean, we were elected to do that, and, and so I, I share those concerns, and I really, extremely, especially, I mean, if you want it to be at a committee, that needs to be revisited. People are not being invited to talk, even when they are, when they do have policy suggestions. So I, I guess I just wanted to take the opportunity to say, or to at least ask the question, that we further this discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? David?
I, I share her concerns. When, when I found out that, that Dr. Gandhi and Jim Johnson had testified on the position of what sounded like the position of the Fargo School Board on this particular bill, when did we take that position? I'm not on the government, the GAC committee, so, you know, if a decision was made there, that may be so, but wouldn't it not have been reported to the board?
I believe, David, if you think back after the last negotiation session, our discussions were that we should work with NDSBA to try and get a bill to put a time limit on negotiations, which is exactly what we did. So if you don't remember that, my apologies, but I'm pretty sure we've talked about it multiple times.
So, okay, so I take it then that you were testifying on behalf of the School Boards Association or the Fargo School Board?
I testified as a superintendent, and I testified strictly from an operational perspective. And I think I made it very clear, and my testimony is available online as well, that my testimony was focused from the perspective of what happens when we are unable to issue contracts prior to the start of the next fiscal year, specifically going into the fact that we have to pay all of our staff retroactively. We have all of our staff that are not represented by the union that are waiting for a salary, and oftentimes that when we do have to do retroactive payment, like we've had to do in the past couple of years, we have to reactivate staff that may have retired or resigned in the time after, at the end of the school year. And then we have to deal with TFFR, because we then have to reactivate those employees, and then we have to give their TFFR contribution as well. So that was my perspective, and my testimony is available online, because I do, and I will, I have no problem saying that to all of our staff. The last couple of years, at least since I've started in my role, we've had to provide retroactive pay to our staff, for whatever reason. And I would say this openly, that I don't want the board to delay negotiations, and I wouldn't want the teachers to delay negotiations either. My goal to be the best, most efficient that we can be operationally, would be to make sure that we have issued contracts prior to the start of the fiscal year, so we're not doing retroactive pay for our staff. We're not starting the school year with unsettled contracts, because I think it goes against the culture that we want to create, and it goes against just budget planning. We, we have to start our budget planning process in July, and we have to have it certified by October. If we don't have what, 80% of our salary and, our budget is salaries and benefits, if we don't know what that's going to look like, then it's really hard for us to plan for future budgets as well. So that's where my advocacy came from.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I just want a little more clarification too, because I feel like this is maybe a slippery slope to go down, because, you know, like, I, I testified against a bill about vaccines in schools, but I did that with my colleague, Paul Carson, in the Department of Health, and I did that as a pediatrician. It was stated that I was a Fargo Public School Board member, but I wasn't necessarily, I, I didn't ask you guys permission, so I guess I'm just, should I have done that? Or like, what, is this only when it's education-related? Technically, that was. I mean, if Nikki, you were going to testify about PTA stuff, I'm sure that might happen. I just, is the expectation that every time, we would somehow come and be unanimous about? I mean, I just assumed you guys liked vaccines in schools, but.
I can answer. I guess in my opinion, I would say that it would be appropriate for you to state your positions, right, as an individual, and, you know, as a pediatrician that works for XYZ company, but you're not here saying Sanford's, this is Sanford's position, even though you work there. Same thing with the board, right? You're a board member, and you are, but this is your individual opinion, unless the board has voted on it. And then I think it would be fair to say, you know, on behalf of the school board.
I just, I feel like that's what Jim and Ruopak. I just, I feel like that's what Jim and Rupak did. He was representing superintendent, and you were there representing NDSBA. But unless I misunderstand, I watched both your testimony, but...
The emails say Fargo Board of Education, like, support or strongly oppose, yeah.
So I think the question then becomes, I think, I hear your question about the Sunday night emails that we sent to legislators. From my understanding, and from my recollection, I can go back and check the governmental affairs committee meeting, you did ask the governmental affairs committee, that do you have the liberty to take positions for the Sunday night emails that we're sending to board members? And based off of that, the process that, at least this has been the case since I started as superintendent, is the board has a governmental affairs committee, the chair of that committee has met with myself, and the representatives from West Fargo Public Schools, and actually, starting this week, Graham Forks is jumping on board as well. That's where we align to our positions, because things move quickly as a governmental affairs committee, and then Robin sends those out to legislators on behalf of Fargo Public Schools. So that's always been my understanding of that process, and the function of the GAC committee that we have. So if that process is in question, I think we just need to know that from the board.
And I would say I'm doing the best that I can. Things can happen within minutes, things change. If I am misinterpreting what the board wants the direction to be, I need to be told that. And whether that goes through Rebecca, or whatever, but things happen quickly. I'm not doing anything differently than I've done in, for the last, I think, seven sessions. So I do my best to interpret what I feel the majority of the board would direct us to do, based upon our legislative priorities. And there are times when I have to put a position out there that I don't personally agree with. But that is my obligation to the board, in trying to interpret the direction I am given. So what I am hearing is, perhaps we should bring this up to President Knutson, and she can talk about our processes, and how we analyze that. It's kind of difficult to do that mid-session, we're almost at crossover, but I'm always willing to take advice. Just doing the best that I can, guys.
Robin, this is Rebecca again. I'd be happy to visit about that. Right now, we have the process in place, that is in place, unless we, until we change our process. This is a process that has been in place since I've been on the board. I would request that if, well, I would request that we, that we follow the decision of the board, similarly to when we vote on something. That even if we don't agree with the vote that took place, that we support the majority. Our policies call for us to do that, so I would suggest and request that we do that, unless we decide to make a change. I would also request that if it is too difficult to refrain from doing that, that a personal email address be used, especially if you are taking a position that is not a position of the board. And that would be, again, unless, for now, until we change our process, until we have an opportunity to have further dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Dr. Gandhi?
And I just want to clarify with the board, and make sure that, for me, things shouldn't, I don't plan on things changing unless I'm directed by the board. Otherwise, it is a function of the superintendent to advocate for our school district, even outside of the board's position. Not only in my role as a superintendent, that's part of my responsibilities in my, with the title I have, but I'm also part of North Dakota Council for Education Leaders Legislative Focus Group, as a lobbying entity on behalf of public school administrators for the state. So I will continue to utilize both of those roles with the specific legislation that's at hand today. I am going to strongly oppose that, and I think, I want to make that clear. I think in my role as a superintendent for a public school district, I am unapologetic in my advocacy for public schools. And any threatened, threatened to divert public schools dollars for, that could be appropriated for us, for other things, that doesn't mean that we're against partnerships, or we don't respect other institutions in our area, but we fight tooth and nail. And like I said before, we invest in our human capital with 80% of our budget going to salaries and benefits. And even at that rate, we are maybe looking at 1% to 2% the last couple of legislation sessions. So I am going to fight hard for our district, in terms of making sure that we are securing as many public school dollars as we can for the educators of Fargo Public Schools, unless I'm directed otherwise by the board. And that would mean opposing any bill, strongly opposing any bill, both in my role independently, and as part of NDCL, that would take away from those allocated dollars for public school educators.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. And first, I'd like to just comment on what you just said, Rupak. And I think it is completely appropriate for you to do so, individually and in your position. I think that where my concern lies is the board's position. And with all due respect, we have not voted, even previously, it was asked of GAC, in terms of the chairs' sort of liberties. And to me, I guess, just because it's always been done, doesn't make it the best way, or the right way. And although I appreciate your efforts, I'm not trying to minimize, or, I am just trying to say, I think we can do better. I think it's not representative all the time of all of us, and therefore, it should not be articulated, or written, or shared, as if it is. And, you know, even if the statement is that we voted in the majority, that's a different conversation. Right now, we're not having the discussion at the full board. And I think, one other thing this brings up that's problematic is perhaps that it's, you know, a quorum of a committee, when it really should be a discussion happening at the full board level. I understand also, that you bring up things that need to be timely, but these have all been, there have been times where we could have discussed them further as a full board, and we also have the ability to call a special meeting, in order to do so. If we do strongly want to take a position as a full board, I just, I feel like, and also when you talk about students, and what's right for students, what's right for all of Fargo students, right? I mean, we share students in lots of situations. And so I think, we, as elected officials, also need to consider all students. And, you know, some of these might help some students. I just, I think it's worthy of a discussion, and I just, the current practice doesn't allow for that, or process. And there isn't anything in policy that says that this is the way we do it. It was a committee sort of decision, again, not a full board decision. And I think, lastly, I'll say, the city is having the same conversation, I think, around using letterhead, or email addresses, and things like that. And again, it goes back to whether or not you're taking a position on your own behalf, as a member of the school district, or the board, sorry, I meant the board, or as a full board, that becomes really the question. And I won't, I mean, I think it is irresponsible of me to not speak up, even if I am in the minority opinion. It's irresponsible. And so, this whole speak with one voice, I understand, and have no problem representing or saying why the board chooses or does X, Y, and Z, or why, you know, this was the topic at hand, and the majority decided to move forward this way. But I also believe it's my responsibility to articulate it when I don't agree, and I, I don't see that as a problem. And I hope that others do that, too, because to be silenced, that's not why we're here. It's not just about conforming, it's about the desire to be the best we can be, and that takes collective idea sharing. It's healthy to disagree. It's healthy. That's it.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. I'm sure that President Knutson will take those to heart. In closing, I must state that two years ago, when I did ask for board approval, I was kind of scoffed and laughed at, like, why would you ask for formal board approval? So I was a little bit more careful this time, and did not, did not hear any dissension to that. So I moved forward with the best that I could. Please know that. Can everybody please entertain me with trying to switch the order of D and E? Does anybody oppose to that? I know that there are several people that are here for the item 5E. Is there any opposition to changing that? No. Okay. If that's okay with FEA, I would welcome you to the podium. Jennifer Mastert was so kind to let me know that she was at conferences tonight. So Kim is here. Thank you for joining us, Kim.
Tonight, I am honored to speak to you on behalf of...
Mic, please.
I hate that mic. To speak on behalf of the Fargo Education Association, and its 900-plus education professionals. As the professional organization of teachers and support personnel of Fargo Public Schools, the Fargo Education Association arrives, or advocates for great public education for every child. The anticipated collaboration between FEA and the cabinet would have included these topics for the month: gifted and talented overloads in virtual academy; title school parent involvement activities and teacher requirements; English learner guidelines; improvement plans; school and teacher safety; communication between staff and administration at the building level; a shift in recess philosophy; cleaning in our buildings. However, the FEA has received two emails from Superintendent Gandhi, one dated January 19th to FEA leadership, and the other to Fargo Public School staff dated January 27th, wanting to end FEA district administration collaboration. FEA represents 80% of our current teaching staff, and has held regular meetings with the district administration for over 50 years. Many rewarding collaborative sessions have occurred, along with discussions during which both parties do not see eye to eye. Stopping this collaboration, only to hear voices that support the district, will not give a true account of the morale, culture, and concerns with Fargo Public Schools. It is clear the administration has decided dissension in opinions between FEA and the district is the catalyst to ending these meetings. Dr. Gandhi stated, "The current model of monthly meetings asks FEA leadership to be the voice of all educators, influence administrative decisions, and be involved in a scope of work outside the realm of contractual obligations." This is precisely our union's mission, to bring forward as the elected voices of our members, learning and workspace concerns within the realm of contractual obligations, such as those mentioned above. Superintendent Gandhi is proposing to establish FPS Town Hall meetings, in an attempt to circumvent the authority and ability of the FEA to communicate on behalf of its members. It appears, from Superintendent Gandhi's emails, that he desires to dissolve the FEA's relationship with cabinet, and tarnish the collective voice of our members. A town hall structure would require individuals to publicly state their personal opinions. However, individual speech by district employees is in fact limited and regulated by our district policy 5116. Under this policy, any inappropriate speech made by an employee is prohibited and may subject an employee to disciplinary action. Speech that causes or leads to disruption of work, or interferes with the school district's interests, may be subject, may subject the speaker to a job termination or dismissal. How can teachers confidently and truthfully speak to administration at the proposed Town Hall meetings? How can they speak in a truthful, honest, and critical manner of the administration's policy and procedures, without risking their continued employment within the district? The FEA means for teachers to safely voice their opinions and concerns. FEA is more than capable of speaking for its members. It appears that the administration does not trust the communication that it receives from the FEA. However, FEA holds regular meetings with building representatives, holds an open-door policy to talk to FEA leadership, and continually collects data and information throughout various surveys, to ensure fidelity in our membership's voice. Administration is attempting to bypass the collective voice of FEA, in hopes that they will receive a more conciliatory answer. Communication and collaboration are integral, and any attempt to minimize or eliminate the voice of the FEA is counterproductive. Simply because the administration no longer wants to hear this consensus position of the FEA, administration's attempt to establish Town Hall meetings, to avoid an organization's authorized voice of its members, borders on an unfair labor practice. We ask that the board direct Superintendent Gandhi to reestablish monthly collaborative meetings with the FEA, and consider the impact of policy 5116 on these proposed Town Hall meetings.
Thank you. Dr. Gandhi?
I know, Board President, if I can just ask for a point of clarification, or, I know that board members and administration is not required to provide a response. May I ask for permission to provide a response regarding this topic?
Certainly.
Thank you to Kim Belgard, Vice President of the FEA, for your statements today. And I think it's important to clarify my intent, since my intent has been questioned, and as has been the intent for administration. This is going to be one of the main topics at our first Town Hall, is why did administration make a change? And I think this speech today was a prime example. It is unfortunate that administration has been in a situation where our actions cannot, when they're shared with FEA. Oftentimes, the reality of, and the justification by what we're doing, is not being shared back to the general staff in the full manner. Today, it was, it was implied, and it was stated, that administration looks to cut relationships with FEA. That is absolutely not true. That administration does not want to have any relationship with FEA. Actually, if you look at the original email that I did send to both the FEA president and the vice president, I had said that I no longer think that our monthly meetings, which have now become administrative in function, are necessary. However, we do want to continue working with FEA on any contract-related issues, and that you can, any cabinet member at any point can have those meetings scheduled, even if it's more frequently than on a monthly basis, with the appropriate admin assistant. I think it's really important to talk about, what are we trying to do as an organization? I think FEA has a very, very good and tight role, and that is to advocate for the staff and for its members, specifically when it comes to contract negotiations, and when it comes to the working conditions of all of the FEA's members. However, we also have to respect the fact that, as an organization, we have administrators. We have a hierarchy within our organization, because we hire school administrators to be able to manage their staff, and to work with their staff to resolve issues. One of the reasons that administration said the monthly meetings with FEA leadership are no longer working, was not a comment on FEA, or our relationship with FEA. It really was the fact that we were meeting on a monthly basis with the superintendent, but actually, the meetings were actually happening on a weekly basis, with both associate superintendents as well. And what was happening is that we would get one or two concerns brought to us, and oftentimes we said, can you tell us more? How many staff does this impact? Or, most importantly, we would often say, has a staff tried to work out this issue with the building-level principal, or with their direct manager, which is outlined in both our contract as Level 1 grievance procedure, and also in our employee resolution process. And oftentimes, those things didn't happen. So for administration, what we recognize is that the FEA leadership is now asking to take responsibility for principal managerial duties within our district, and in fact, dictating principals what to do. We have that in documentation from FEA leadership, telling staff members not to work with their principals, or from even FEA leadership demanding of principals to take certain action. So that's really the purpose of what we were trying to solve, is the fact that we want to be able to have an open and honest conversation with our staff, and be able to explain things. Specifically, we had talked about recess. As you may know, administration has tried to work with FEA on elementary recess for several months, and that can be documented by just looking at our posting for noon supervisors, for positions we were unable to fill. And then we also shared with you DPI guidance on responsibilities of teachers during recess to count for instructional time, but that information never gets shared back out to the general staff. So really, the purpose of administration is to be... So really, the purpose of administration is to be able to work with our staff directly and to get all of their input because it isn't fair for majority of the staff of Fargo Public Schools to have many decisions be impacted by two individuals, even if they are representing the majority. The best example of that I can say is, we do know that the Board of Education approached FEA leadership with the potential to provide all staff with a bonus, and that was turned down by FEA leadership, but that was not a discussion shared with all of the staff members. So I think that's just the structure that we're trying to create, is more organic conversations between our employees and their supervisors within our district and make sure that we are not providing an opportunity. It is never our intent to disseminate our relationship with the FEA or not to collaborate. That has never been the extent. It's to make sure that we are making sure we're providing the opportunity for all staff to work at the lowest levels with their supervisors.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for humoring me to take these items out of order. I wanted to do that out of respect for everybody that is here in the audience. Jim? Well, that was my next question. Shall we take a break before we reconvene here? Everybody's getting up. So we're going to take a break and we'll be back at 7:25. Thank you. Our crowd is thinning. Rebecca, are you still with us?
I'm still hanging with you guys.
Okay. And I'm not quite sure if Tracy or Nikki will call in, but hopefully they'll announce themselves.
We are both here. Thank you.
Wow, this is efficient. All right. Thank you. We'll go back to item 5D, the student mobility report. Looks like Dr. Gross is going to lead us through that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On the screen and in your packet is Board Memo, Member, or Memo, excuse me, 86, and this is a copy of our preliminary mobility report. It is preliminary because the data in it is only from September 2nd through the end of our first semester, so the end of January 19th. We share this twice each and every year so that you can get a snapshot of the mobility rate within our district. What we provide for you is data broken down by the different grade bands, elementary, middle school, and high school. Both those students who entered the district and those who left, basically all around family choice, families who decided to move into the Fargo School District and those who decided to move out. On the data charts themselves, what you'll see is, other than the large aggregate numbers, most of them will be percentages. And the reason we do that is because sometimes the cell sizes are so small, we want to do our very best to keep the anonymity of the students as we move through the data. So with that, I just wanted to share some of the information with you. So again, on the screen or in that packet, on page three is probably one of the first things that I'd like to draw your attention to, and that is just the number of students for the first semester in 2021 who transferred into the district and then out. We provided one other set of data for you, basically the previous year, so you can get a comparison between the two years. And we have a similar pattern from 2020 to 2021 as we look at that information. And then on the bottom of that page, on the bottom of page two, you'll see that exact same information just broken down into a bar graph, just to give it in a graphical representation. So of that, if I go back to the numbers, you can see that in 2021, that first semester, we had 906 students transfer into the district, 1,073 transfer out of the district, so around 2,000 students difference. And if you compare that to our population as of today, which we are at 11,179, you can see we are a very mobile district in both families who move in and those who move out. Then as we go from there, like we have in the past, we've just broken that data down a little bit more for you. So starting on page three, the same pattern will follow for elementary, middle school, and high school. So this will be on pages three, four, and five. What you'll see is that those transfer in, a percentage that go to, for example, in orange on the screen, any of our private schools, I'm sorry, who came to us from the private school, from North Dakota not being West Fargo, that's in the dark blue. The reason we pulled that out differently is because West Fargo being so close to us, it's very easy to move from one community to the next, not so much if you're moving someplace else in North Dakota. Then going around that wheel, you'll see the next category is in North Dakota being West Fargo. Then in green, Minnesota, but not Morehead, again, the same reason as West Fargo, because we are neighbors. Then the purple is someplace else in Minnesota. And then lastly, out of state, someplace out of Minnesota, out of North Dakota. So you can see the percentages who transferred in at the elementary level. Then on the bottom of that screen, the same colors are used for those transfer out. So you can see the percentage of students who, and families, at the elementary level who transferred out of the Fargo Public Schools. That same data then continues on page four. As you look at middle school, colors are the same, percentages are similar, a little bit different, just based upon the age of the students. This happens to be grades six through eight, transfer in. And then on the bottom is that same age band, middle school, transferring out of our school system. On page five, just so that we have a true snapshot of all of our system, K through 12, here is the data for the transfer in to the Fargo Public School and a percentage by those different areas. And lastly, on the bottom of page five, the transfer out. In the past, a request was made of administration to provide a little bit more data around the in and out, and that was broken down by the different areas of ethnicity. So on page six, what you will see is that data, a little bit more granular, again, by percentages of both in and out at the different grade bands and looking at things like free and reduced EL services and so on. So this just gives us a good snapshot of who we are as a system, where we're at right now after the first semester is done. And at the end of the year, we'll come back with a full report that will give you a snapshot or a true picture of that entire school year. So that's the mobility report as of first semester.
Very good. Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you. So Dr. Gross, can you help me, last mobility report or last year and then this year, both of them so far look like a decline? I think you mentioned that actually in the beginning and that. And so what does that do? And how often do we report that then to RSP? Because what does that do to their projected numbers? I would assume it changes them to some degree, because now we have two years in a row, or maybe three of the four, last four?
The data that's on page two is very similar almost each and every year that I share this report with you, so it'd be multiple years of that data. When we talk with RSP, one of the pieces that they will look at is more about our system and the capacity of our buildings. They do use our enrollment data, but they go further than that. They will work with the demographers from the city. They will look at the enrollment areas in our community where there is potential for future growth. And then they have a very complicated formula that helps them determine that growth pattern or their projections. So we do provide this to them, but they use that as one of the pieces that help them make their projections.
If I may ask a follow-up. So to, are we concerned that this is a new trend? And then I have a follow-up one after that, if that's okay.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
So I think when we were going through kind of the Davies and Discoveries capacity charts earlier this year, we have shown, I think, for at least the last, I think, five years that we calculated, we have consistently shown a trend of where enrollment might be higher in August versus what it is in May for our school district. So RSP does know that information, and it has been a consistent pattern within our school district, but they are also going to build their enrollment base according to our capacity. So for them, while that information is considered, it's more important to see what that enrollment is at its highest point because they know that's how many kids we're going to have in each of our buildings.
And I guess when I mean trend, like at the net-net, when we're looking year after year, right? It's as far as, and I see some adjustments on our, you know, previous projections they have made, right? Like they, if they say we're going to grow by 800, they adjust it and say, okay, no, 600 would be the new adjusted projection. So I'm just wondering, because typically, the mobility at the end of the day ends up being more in than out, correct? But the last couple of years, it's been the opposite?
Up and down.
A net positive, it's been, I mean, other than now and last year, and maybe 18, 17? No?
I would actually tell you, and I'd have to go back, but I'll bet you, more than 50% of the time, we lose more than we get through the course of the year. And I'd guess it's actually probably 75% of the time since I've been on the board.
Okay. So go back and look at that. But then I guess my other, my last question would be, if I may, about kindergarten registration, because I also know that was part of the conversation in our projections and enrollment. And I just wondered, clearly, there's a lot more time, but comparing it to years prior, you know, sort of, two indicators, are, is it on the same sort of trajectory as prior years? And B, I know one of the questions was, are those kiddos, or one of the unknowns, was, are those kiddos going to enroll as kindergartners that decided to not come this last school year? Or are they going to enter as first graders? And so my question is, has enrollment now that is open sort of given us any sort of indication as to what that might look like?
I am so glad you said that, because it gives us a prime opportunity to advertise. I will let Missy speak here in a little bit, but I do want to just say that this is a perfect opportunity to advertise. There is a reason why we're making a bigger push and a more concentrated effort this year to retrieve all of the students that, we had a 200-student approximate last, last year, to see whether they can come back in kindergarten or first grade. Our trend is actually better than where we were after the first couple of days of registration. I know Missy is going to do a spot tomorrow on TV as well promoting our kindergarten registration, and I'll let her speak a little bit to that. But right now, I believe, last I checked, it was about 270 or 280-something students, which is a little bit higher than where we have it in the past years.
So I'm assuming Missy wants to speak, because she went like this and sat up a little straighter.
Well, first of all, I appreciate the question because I think we've been wondering the same thing. And so I kind of reached out to our principals to have the conversation, and we, I asked, has anybody been calling and asking about going to first grade? And we haven't had any. And so they said the parents that they have visited with mainly before school started, we're planning to go to kindergarten. But we did say that if a parent has that question, to please talk to the principal, and they would make sure that they'd understand the difference, you know, between the two. We certainly will work with the families on that. But I do have to thank our communications department because we were wondering, like, we want to have our rooms ready, we want to have our teachers hired for kindergarten, and if our numbers are going to spike above RSP, we'd love to have an indication sooner than later. So the communications department has put together, I think, a more robust advertisement. And so if you've noticed the neon green signs in front of our elementary schools for registration, we have been making a couple of videos that we put out that we'll put onto the newsletters and probably ask our parents of our current students to share with individuals that might have a kindergartner. We have very promising results right now because this is probably, I think, over 100 higher than normal for registrations that are currently in. So we, and actually, the interview tomorrow is about vaccines, so won't be kindergarten. But I will say that I will try to keep maybe the board up to date by giving, or your weekly board updates, we'll give you the kindergarten numbers as we can, maybe bi-weekly or something as we go forward. But I think the main thing is now we're only building principals to keep, do some of their advertisements. I think one piece that people are going to miss is we aren't in a position right now to say, let's have an open house this spring. And that is something that people want to do and see where they're going to be, so we've got to put our heads together about what can we do to let people peek in our buildings if we are still under the requirements that we are currently. And our principals have been kind of putting their heads together, trying to think of some options. I don't know, does that help, Jennifer?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Missy. I've got Brian and Ruopak. Is that okay?
So I was going to comment on those signs, because I've been driving around specifically looking at elementary schools just to see what we were doing, and I was quite impressed that you guys, we, have been advertising, and it's good advertising. It sticks right out. And so congratulations. Keep doing the good work.
Dr. Gandhi?
I would agree with Missy and Brian. I think our communications team and even our IT team have done a great job of promoting kindergarten registration.
kindergarten registration. I think it'll be interesting to see, although the data hasn't changed significantly in mobility from previous years, this year, there's, it is an anomaly. We have 1,400 students in our virtual academy, which are, you know, essentially less mobile, because there have been some students have taken advantage of doing that, even if they had other circumstances, and they've worked with the district if, if they had to go out of state for a little bit or something like that. So it will be interesting to see this data kind of over time as well, because of COVID's impact on this year.
The year with the asterisk, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is superintendent report, Dr. Gandhi.
Thank you. I think with the COVID and legislative update, I have kind of covered most things, so I'll defer my time.
That's the favorite thing that you said tonight. I'm getting tired. Okay. Next item is the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve that with the exceptions of six H and I. I see Jim's hand.
I move adoption of the consent agenda with the addition of the HR addendum, but items H and I will deal with under board reports, or under business, rather.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of, excuse me, approving the consent agenda as listed earlier, please vote by saying yes.
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 Any opposed, no. All right, we're good there. Robin, could I have a confirmation on who all is on the phone, just for a minute's sake, please? Sure. Rebecca?
Rebecca's on the phone.
Okay. Tracy?
This is Nikki.
Okay, Nikki's on the phone. Is Tracy still on?
Tracy is here.
Okay, and you all voted yes. Thank you.
Correct.
Okay, on to the first business item, 7A attendance boundaries implementation plan. I believe that's coming to us from the planning committee. Would you like, okay? Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Robin. Planning met with the administration, and as per the direction that the board had given them at our board meeting, they have developed what they're recommending for our grandfathering provisions regarding boundary changes and how it's going to be implemented. And I would love to walk you through this document, but I actually think Dr. Gross is the person who really wrote it, so I'd like to defer to his expertise.
Thank you very much. So I will refer you to memo 94, and this is the attendance boundary implementation plan. So really, the first two pages of it, the first one is just a summary statement and then the table of contents, for those who might want to look at that. And then really, as we look at page two and three, that's where we begin to get into the, the plan itself. On page two, you will see a map that is the current secondary boundaries. So these are the boundaries that we are functioning under as we move forward. Below that, then, are two data sets. They are the middle school buildings and the high school buildings, so we can get a snapshot in time of the, of the students who are in those buildings according to our current secondary boundaries. Then on page three, you will see a map of the adopted secondary boundaries that will change in the year 2022 for that school year. Then below it are two data sets, again, middle school and high school. These reflect the students who were in our school as of September 2nd, if all of the students impacted in those areas moved. Now, we know, based on some of the information we're going to share further into this document, that will take some time, and by the time we get a few years out, those numbers will slightly change. But that was just to give you an idea of what the impact of those boundaries would be today if fully implemented. The next page in the packet is a narrative of the phase-in plan that we are going to suggest, and words are good, I think, in pictures. So I'm going to skip two more pages and go to page six. And I think this graphic that's on page six does a very nice job of showing the roll-in model or the phase-in model that we are suggesting. Since these changes will take place in 22, 23, I'd like to draw your attention to that third column. That's where the new boundaries would take effect, and in that year, then, we began to color-code the different grade bands. So in 22, 23, students in grades six and seven, who will be impacted by the boundary changes, will be asked to attend the middle school and that the new boundaries would show. I'm going to step back one year to 21, 22, or next school year. Because we are asking in 22, 23 that both sixth and seventh graders attend that new boundary, we are putting out or proposing that next year, we give the option to sixth grade students, so that if they would like to attend that middle school a year early, they certainly would have that option, so that over the course of their sixth, seventh, and eighth grade year, they'd be able to spend their entire middle school career in that building. So that's why that's, grade six is in that purple up on the screen. Coming back to the year 22, 23, eighth grade students in blue on this graphic, we would say, please finish out your middle school. You have been in there both your sixth and seventh grade year, go ahead and finish out that middle school career. Grade nine, we would ask anyone in the impacted area that they begin to attend the new high school. In green on this chart, then, for grades 10, 11, and 12, we would say, you are at that high school, finish out your career at that high school. Then you can see as we progress through 22, all the way to 26, a roll-in or a phase-in approach, so that both our community and everyone who might be wanting some more information can see what that roll-in plan looks like. Since we said next school year, we would like to make the option, or allow anyone in grade six the opportunity to transfer one year early to that middle school. If you go back one page to page five in the document, we have created a specific form that families can fill out, give to their building principal, so that the principals will have that information when they begin to create classes, sections, and teams at the middle school. So if this is approved, we would like to get this out so families can share this with their building principals moving forward, and it would be this form here. Then, as we move through the document, I'd like to draw your attention to page seven and the section that's called grandfathering or petitioning. Under this plan, we are recommending that there would be no grandfathering of students at the secondary level, but we would not want, and you'll see in bold, in its bulleted there, no two or more students from the same dwelling to attend two different high schools at the same time. So if there happened to be a time where there was a family who had a current 11th-grade student and an eighth-grade student, and the next year, they would be in grade nine and grade 12, so they could walk into that high school together, we would want that family to stay together to be able to be at that high school. So really, if you can walk in with your sibling and both be at the high school, we want to make that happen. So that's what that bullet would say. So on the next page, we have created a specific form for families who'd be impacted like that. Again, so that our building principals would have the knowledge and the information that they would need to, one, ask the students what courses and classes they'd like to register for, and make sure we have the appropriate sections designed at our different high schools. And then lastly, in this packet, if you go to the, the last page, there's information that's very similar to what we've talked about, but one thing we wanted to highlight is the impact on extracurricular activities. And what we know is when a student is in grade, they enter middle school or they enter high school, that's the time they set their eligibility to participate in a varsity-level sport. We would want to make sure that we didn't do anything that would jeopardize the student's opportunity to participate in that extracurricular activity. So we would give the option to a family, when you hit that grade nine, you, obviously, if you are ready to move and you had another sibling, you have the chance to move. But if you are already participating in a varsity sport, and that would be participating, actively being part of that team, for example, maybe I am a tennis player who is at a middle school, who is playing second doubles or first doubles on the varsity team, we would allow that, that student to continue at that high school. So because they already have a connection with that coach, with that team, and so on. So that's really the, the only provision that we would suggest as part of the extracurricular impact, because when a student goes to grade nine, they truly are reshifting their eligibility at the high school level. So that is just a quick run-through of the packet. It's a very similar transition plan to what we've shared with you in the past, but just wanted to update some of the forms and make sure that our public knows about these, and we can get them out as soon as possible, after questions, discussion, and with your approval.
To get the ball moving, I'll move that we approve the attached boundary change implementation plan and direct administration to proceed with the implementation for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Second.
Motion's on the floor. Any discussion? Seth?
I do have a quick question, something that popped into my brain, and I do apologize, it's in here, make sure if I can get this out right. Here's a scenario that I'm wondering about, that is kind of a combination between the house dwelling, grandfathering, and the sports. If you have a seventh grader that's going to Davies and normally would have to move to South, but they're grandfathered because of sports, they're in seventh grade, they have an eighth-grade sibling. What happens there?
Yeah, we would, we're, our goal is to make sure that, at the same time, no two students in the same household have to go to two separate high schools.
Okay.
So there is even a unique situation that was posed of us, that had our wheels turning. If you have a family of, let's say, four children, and there's going to be, the oldest child and the youngest child won't be at school at the same time, but the children might be spaced apart enough, every two years apart, where there will always be two kids going to the same high school, then the youngest child that might be in elementary school at the 22, 23 school year would still go to the, the non-impacted middle school, so then eventually, they can go to high school with their sibling.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Lots and lots of scenarios. Thank you for putting so much that. I have, David?
My question was similar to that with this, what you were just speaking of. So you've got, you've got a ninth grader and you've got a senior. Okay, the ninth grader's going to go to that same high school, is going to remain in the same high school rather than moving to the new one. What happens when he becomes a 10th grader? Does he stay there?
Yes, as soon as a student begins their educational career at that high school, they would continue there.
Okay, here's the second part of that, then. By the time he becomes a senior, he has another sibling who is a ninth grader, who has now been going to this, has been going to a new middle school all the time. That sibling has the option of coming back to that high school again?
So actually, I think that was one of the scenarios that was emailed to Dr. Gandhi and myself. And what we would do is, we would look to see, instead of making that student go to the other middle school and then back to that high school, we would just continue him in that feeder pattern, so that it, it would make sense that they are feeding up to that high school.
Okay, it's confusing, but it seems to work.
Curveball after curveball, but you keep catching them. Rupe?
In, in the chance that a parent, which they might choose to say that, I want my child to go to this other middle school, but then come back to the high school, we would work with that parent. But hopefully, we could just honor the full feeder pattern.
Jennifer, you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, good questions. I feel like every time I think I know the answer, then I get another question to think about. But how is the, how are those scenarios specifically going to work with transportation? I'll keep it simple.
So we had said during the year of choice, so that would be next year, where families have the option to, as sixth graders, to either go to the, the existing middle school or the middle school that they will go to as a seventh grader. We have talked about providing transportation both ways. Once the boundaries have been changed, then it would be up to the family, and we would not continue to run buses two different ways in the same neighborhood.
But Dr. Gross, we will be running buses for three years, because we're phasing out students. So it, the realized impact of the non-transportation won't be until four years.
So can I clarify? Thank you. So, okay, so you'll be running double the buses, or will you be transferring students? Or what does that look like in this phase out, like three, four years? And then my second part of that question is really, the family that was grandfathered or, or the provision that was put in place, would they no longer have transportation option?
So I think we'll need to determine how many families take advantage of the opportunity to either go one year early or to continue in that school. And then once we have that number, we will work with our transportation department to develop the best bus routes that we can. That might include a transfer bus at one of the buildings. It may not, but we'll certainly want to be good stewards as we create those routes. Like Dr. Gandhi mentioned, we will continue until the phase in is completely done, and then after that is done, then there would not be buses that would go in two different directions in one neighborhood.
Robin, this is Rebecca.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Rebecca.
Overall, I don't have concerns with the plan. Reading through it, it seems to be quite similar to the plan that was put in place a few years ago, when there was the shift to go up to Ben Franklin and North High from Clara Barton, Carl Ben South High neighborhood, in terms of how that transition plan works. So I don't have any problems or concerns regarding the transition plan. One, I, one thing I did notice was on the form that has to do with, well, I think it's grandfathering on the form, and this would be just probably a technicality or a, making sure we use the right language on that form, since we're talking about having more of a petition process versus calling it grandfathering. So just checking to make sure that the form matches the language in the plan. And that's really my own, the comment that I'd like to share right now. Thank you.
Dr. Gross?
Thank you so much. Yes, the form that's on page eight should match the language that we have on page seven that talks about grandfathering slash petitioning process. So we will make that change, if that's what you would like.
Just make it make sense, I think, is what we're asking. Jennifer?
I can never tell when this is on. Thank you. Okay, so my next question has to do with, on page three, and now that your administration has had more time to kind of look at the numbers maybe closer, or go through some of those things, I, I understand that this is, this doesn't consider the phase-in approach, but since this time, well, and I should back up and say, even before this, we were told that Ben Franklin would be over its targeted enrollment in, in 25, 26. So I guess I'm wondering, as part, one of my questions, would that be part of, you know, this overall plan? Was that discussed? Like, what, what are we going to do then? What does that look like, so people can think about and prepare for that? And then, secondly, the relatively newer information would be, have we considered in this implementation plan and what, in this phase-in approach, the numbers regarding the new development or approval of the development that will be built in, by Kmart? And because, and specifically because when I look at this number of CBE, that is at capacity already. And, and so then, then what's the district plan when that comes online? And, and so then, then what's the district plan when that comes online?
Uh, I'll take what we can. So with Ben Franklin, the target enrollment, as, as you know, last year was a number that we provided to RSP and it was changed to be aligned with the feeder pattern model that the board had told us we wanted. So that target enrollment, we know will never be perfect because it's rounded to one grade level more of, one grade level more or less of a pair between Ben Franklin and North. So Ben Franklin, physical space is actually more. Um, if you were to look at solely a capacity from square footage of students, you can probably get more students. But we gave their target enrollment based on what North could do and taking away one grade level. So we will have to monitor enrollment at all of our middle schools. Actually, RSP says that all of our middle schools will not be over target enrollment at some point. So that's gonna be something for us to monitor, take a look at. Is that an anomaly year after year? Because we can still sustain that cohort of kids at the high school? Or is there something that we need to take a look differently? Uh, at this point, what we know about the development in the apartment complex, where the Kmart building is, is just what's been in the paper. And that is that a TIF was approved for that with some low-income housing and I think about 200 apartments or so, if I remember the number correctly, I don't remember. But, um, I don't know if Rob has calculated that data. That will be part of his analysis every year. But we wouldn't be able to do anything with that because we're making assumptions right now for implementation.
I, uh, I am supportive of the implementation plan that's proposed. I'm compartmentalizing the decision that was made by the board. And then you were basically charged to come up with the phase-in plan. And what we continued to hear was keep it similar to what you've done in the past for grandfathering plans, and I think you've honored that. So I am in favor of, of this proposal.
If we're ready to state like that, I, um, I, I appreciate that administration did take, you know, time to consider the impact of, for families in, in, in this scenario to some degree in terms of, um, allowing for the exception around, well, specifically regarding students and their eligibility, but then not having families having to commute. But it, it's still, or to two different high schools and all the challenges that would propose. And, I mean, I, I still feel like it's not the best long-term plan for the district and for families and students. And I do think that it doesn't really allow a lot of room to accommodate any sort of city infill projects that we already know are coming online, even if we don't have the details. But, you know, being proponents of city infill or speak of, I think that, um, you know, this would propose another challenge. And with our continued growth, we've all said eventually there's gonna need to be something that happens. So, so really to me, it's again about bouncing families around and a significant number of students. I mean, we're talking, what, a thousand? It, it's a lot of students, it's a lot of families. And, um, I just, I, I can't support the implementation plan because I don't support the plan for this type of adjustment, so.
Thank you for explaining that. Questions or comments further? Okay, I see no hands. Anne Marie, I believe, are ready for a roll call.
Robin, do you wanna vote last or do you want Rebecca to vote last?
I'll vote last, I guess.
Okay. Bear with me as I change alphabetical order on the fly then, okay?
Oh, oh, thank you.
All right.
Whatever's easiest for you.
All right, Holden?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Paulson?
No.
Benson?
No.
Gullickson?
We may have lost Nikki. Last, last chance, Nikki. Okay, carry on.
Good. Uh, Robin Nelson?
Yes, motion carries. On to, it's, okay, it's, you know, four, on to the moved business items. So let's, let's take them in order of what they were on the agenda. GP 8E changes. Jennifer, you asked for these to be moved. If you would like to introduce that, that'd be great.
Thank you. Okay, uh, so 8E, I'll get my form in front of me here, proposes the adjustment to, I think it's our monitoring schedule. And if I'm reading it right, it looks like, um, the suggestion here would be to review EL 7 Budgeting and Financial Planning only once a year in December and remove it from the June, um, review cycle. And, and I guess I wanted to pull it so the whole board had a, a chance to discuss this because, and, and to share my thoughts on it here. Because as a non-committee member, I'm not allowed to do that at committees. So, so anyway, my thoughts are this. To, to change this to once a year, I guess my question really is, or my, my question is, don't, doesn't title programming report sort of require a June 30th deadline? And, and was that considered in the discussion? And then secondly, I really do think that, my initial thoughts are that monitoring it twice really allows the board an opportunity to, to better monitor or stay on top of maybe the fiscal health of the district, which ultimately is a board, um, a function of the board and our responsibility. And so, so I, I, it just, it raised a little question or concern. And I, I was hoping that we could have some discussion here about that.
Well, I, I'll do my best to cover this. I, I actually brought this up at the Governmental Affairs Committee. And I just noticed it didn't mirror the other reports. Everything else is monitored once a year, but with the exception of these that are monitored twice. And then we kind of talked about why the difference. And, and then I posed, well, shouldn't, shouldn't we also, why, why is the fiscal part more important than the results parts? So in order for the, the board to evaluate those once a year, in my opinion, seems to mirror the other policies. And I know that the Planning Committee, um, reviews these monthly. And then they come to the board in the consent agenda. So that was my reasoning for doing it. But the Governmental Affairs Committee agreed and here we are. Go ahead.
And I mean, for administration, we've been doing it twice a year, so it doesn't matter for us. The, the, one thing I can share is that this isn't related to title monitoring. This is just EL, um, the two EL monitoring for the board are reporting to titles and the annual audit that we do of our title programs that happens independent of this.
So if I could, I, I guess maybe just to clarify. So I know that we're not monitoring, but we're monitoring in the EL that, that that's being done, right? And so, taking it away from June, I'm just wondering, that only allows December really for the discussion or the review. And I, I get that it's coming to planning. I'm just saying.
And Jackie looked at the schedule to make sure that we would, it would be in sync with what we're doing.
Yeah, there was discussion on which two to move to which month.
Uh huh.
And I think that that, that's where Jackie came in.
Yeah, I think we, you know, looked at what, so one really is relating to budgeting and, and going forward, and the other is really the review of what has happened in the past. Um, and so we tried to align that to say, you know, why are we reviewing maybe, what maybe would go through the year, right? And be a year-end review in the middle of the year. And vice versa for the budgeting, because some of it doesn't maybe necessarily coincide with timing. But like Rupak said, we're open to do, we've been doing it twice a year. And if that's what the board chooses, that's certainly fine with us as well.
Sure. Were similar reasons, if I may ask, given for EL 10? That one's crossed off too, so.
There, there were four that were seven, L, seven, eight, nine, and 10. And so we just moved two to, we just flip flopped them. So there was only two once a year. Okay, Jackie?
And just, and just on the asset protection one, it made more sense to have that review coincide with when we would be renewing insurances, because that's what that's related to as well versus in the middle of the year when the policy is already in place.
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion. I mean, I, I don't know that I feel really strongly to, I just kind of wanted to hear from you all what the rationale was behind it and, and open up the conversation. Just simply because mostly the financial piece caught my attention mostly. So I, I was curious. So thank you for letting me ask some questions around that. So I guess if, if everyone else is okay with that.
Yeah, I don't see any other hands. Um, and Nikki just texted she's floating in and out, so I'm not sure if she'll be on, on the, on the call. So next roll call, Anne Marie.
I don't have a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Do you wanna wait to take them both or, well, go ahead, do them separate. Yeah, sorry, they're two different items, sorry.
Jim?
Move adoption, or acceptance, rather, of GP 8E as provided in our board packet.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, now we're ready, Anne Marie.
Johnson?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Gullickson? Not sure if she's on or not. Holden?
Yes.
Robin Nelson?
Yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is GP 9 changes. Again, Jennifer, if you wanna introduce that for us, that'd be great.
Okay, so. Everything on my screen is eight, so just give me one second here to try to get. Okay. GP 9, so number 2C. So this is GP 9, Board Members Quote of Conduct Under Number 2. It says, um, members, and then it says, "should not or may not express individual negative judgments about superintendent or staff performance in a public meeting." So first my clarifying question, are we talking about monitoring reports? Are we only talking about verbal comments? Or are we talking about both? So if someone could clarify that before I make my comments, that would be helpful.
I at least interpret it to be verbal. I don't think it has anything to do with our monitoring reports.
Okay, uh, thank you, Jim. So then I guess a follow-up would be, do we need to further clarify that? Because as someone who reads that and then the next sentence talks about superintendent performance review and how they're collectively made from, you know, monitoring, you know, having ELs and monitoring reports and, and things like that. I, I'm, it's unclear to me in reading this. It makes, it, it landed on me like, well, okay, how do we effectively review both opportunities for development as well as positive strengths? At the same time, if we're not allowed to, to, you know, make comments. But I, I do understand the, you know, recommendation not to make verbal, you know, negative judgments in a public meeting without, you know, discussing actionable behaviors through monitoring report. But I do think that there is a need to further clarify that there because it doesn't, it doesn't say that.
So I have an idea. So the change in this document that's proposed is just a word switch. So I think maybe if we can put that in one bucket and then maybe under advisement, governmental, uh, Governance Committee can seek to provide further clarification based upon your questions. Would that seem reasonable?
Well, I think it's, I mean, I think, if people feel like they need further discussion, but if we're all here to discuss whether or not it should change, I don't know why not. But, um.
Robin, this is Rebecca.
Sure.
Uh, I'll speak to it because it was my suggestion that the change in the word take place. And Jennifer, I, I take your comments into consideration. I, and I had not thought of your question, so thanks for bringing those up. The, my desire was to, I guess, use stronger language. To, for us to hopefully agree that it's something that, that we don't do. It's something that, uh, by saying that we may not do it, it's, we're saying that it's unacceptable, for example, to, uh, to, to speak, like what Jim was, was referencing earlier. So, yeah, we can do whatever, that was my desire, was to be more direct in that language and in terms of what's acceptable and not acceptable. But I'm willing to, you know, if we need to do some more work on that, um, on that paragraph, if you have some suggestions or others have suggestions, we can bring it back to Governance for more fine tuning. It depends on what the rest of you think.
Send it back to Governance.
I have one, send it back to Governance. This motion isn't on the floor yet, so. No action means no change. Any further feelings? I see no hands. So is that correct in parliamentary procedures to send it back to Governance?
If you tell me there was consensus for that or if there's a directive for that, I mean, there's no motion on the floor for any official consideration.
Correct. Help me out, guys.
Sure.
I agree with Jim, send it back to Governance.
I'm seeing nod, so consensus is enough. I will, I will take that. Do I, do I see you nodding, Tracy? And Rebecca? I think I do.
I'm, I'm, I, I'm sorry, I, it was my intent to mute, I accidentally hung up, so now I'm obviously back with you. Are we talking about not taking any action on this tonight then?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Consensus seems to be, let's just send it back to Governance.
Yep, perfect, that's fine.
Okay, clumsy, but we got there. Thank you, guys. Board reports, we all received a suggested email today from President Knutson. I assume you all read it. Uh, we are working on two hours and 45 minutes. Would the board like to continue giving reports or would you like to save those reports? Jim?
I have one thing I have to share. Planning is meeting. Planning is meeting on February 19th immediately following GAC. So if you're on the Planning Committee and you're also on GAC, just plan on a longer morning. If not, um, I would say try to be here by sometime between 8:00 and 8:30, because whenever GAC gets done, planning will start.
Does anybody else have any objections to?
Did you say the 19th of February, Jim?
Uh, February 19th. GAC is at 7:30.
Correct. And we can certainly send those out too. Okay, I, I am not seeing anybody that's fighting to stay.
Yeah, I have no, no.
Robin?
Yes, Tracy?
Uh, sorry, I, I don't need to read my whole report, but I was just going to make a clarification if I may during my time. I've already received a few emails. When I was reading the COVID-19 Instructional Plan Committee Report this evening, I was, it was not my intention to speak for all teachers in our district. I was summarizing what the two teachers and the one parent on the committee stated during that meeting. So I just wanna be very clear.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh, so in closing, President Knutson had promised to send out her president's report electronically. The only other closing thing is I ask Anne Marie to send all board members North Dakota Century Code about executive sessions for a reminder, especially for a new. And you are giving me the wave, so what else am I missing?
Um, at your desk there was the date reminders listing for upcoming things. Um, I did send out an email today, you might not have had a chance to look at that. But we have scheduled a work session for March 8th. So just wanna draw that to your attention. Not quite sure exactly what time that will start. There is a COVID Instructional Plan Committee meeting that day. So we do need to talk if that's an 8:00 AM start, 8:30, maybe 9:00, not sure. But if you could pencil in that work session, we'll put that in pen, put the start time in as pencil. Uh, but we'll get to you soon on what that officially is. But that work session date. is. But that work session date has been selected. So just wanna make sure that we, we noted that.
Yes, thank you. Jennifer?
Before we end, may I ask, since we're talking about dates and, um, notifications, so, uh, not always, if you're not, if you're a non-committee member, do you know when the next meeting date is or has been set for? Um, might it be acceptable to just have that in an email prior to even the minutes? Because often the minutes in the agenda aren't released for, you know, till 48 hours prior. And so you can't find it on the website and, just a fast way to know. Uh, I don't know. I, I'm just thinking aloud. Sometimes I have to search.
Okay.
And they change sometimes, so.
Take that under advisement. We'll do the best that we can.
Yeah.
There is, on your guys' SharePoint site, there is a board calendar where we place all of your committee meetings. Now, if the committees change, if you, committees change their meeting times, obviously, that's only gonna be up to date as soon as those are set. Um, the minutes of a committee meeting at the end usually include the next committee meeting date. Um, so there's a variety of places where we have those. Um, we try to keep, uh, the listing that I give to each board meeting up to date as well. Um, so it is in, uh, different locations. Um, but then they're also in Betsy's public meetings that she put, puts out each week as well. So those usually come out that Friday before as well.
Yeah. And that's where I was getting it, was just the timeline, like, for, to plan farther in advance. Sorry, David.
And I do include them every Friday in my report as well.
Mm-hmm, right.
So, for the following week.
Right. Sorry, David.
No, I just wanted to say that I did not look at my, uh, I did not look at my computer today, but I was on it last night. And I saw that Joel Lynn has sent out a questionnaire seeing when we could meet as a negotiating team. Please be sure, those of you who are on the committee, answer that. So we do need to get a meeting set up. And, you know, possibly we'll have to have another one within a week or two as well.
Okay. Thank you. I hope you don't feel like I was rushing you. But yeah, this is all good dialogue. Anything else? Yes, sir?
As a board member, as a board member, you could reach out to the committee chairs and ask them as well. We could reach out, um, I would think.
Great, thank you. Okay, the next regular board meeting, not talking committee meetings, guys. Next regular board meeting is February 23rd. Uh, it is 8:22, and we are adjourned. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, everyone. Bye-bye. Have a good night.
I'm gonna make it easier for you, Bob.